... A little upsetting, she's been in the medical field her whole career in the military. There's no credentials, there's no civilian credentials, they're trying to... But before she had to go back to school and get her... Some certain education.
Oh yeah.
The pilot's doctorate. But she wanted to continue some of that federal time. We got him out fishing last week. Navigation process and I help a lot of veterans navigate the path and try to follow the thought of the issue. Talk to another person and try to work around it. And a lot of the problems with the veterans is, you know, we get families that are away. We just want to go to our home area, maybe go to college and then just put all the past behind us. Find that peace, find that peace, get them some mental health services. I'll just do this. Tell everybody I have three things I want to do every day, find a friend, find a need. Well, they're on the back eating probably. So what's the plan? Hi women already. There's eight. You would only, you know, buy, you know, one or two extra chairs.
Good morning, everyone. It is a little after eight thirty in the morning, so I will go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners and ask our esteemed clerk to take the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Wooden.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Teal.
Sparks.
Skaggs.
Ooh. Good catch there, Commissioner. Commissioners Ponstein. Morgan.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
Coleman. Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Green.
Earl.
Here.
Bolkowski. Vice Chair Breavy.
Here.
Commissioners Bolter. Antor. Chair Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen members present and two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Well, now I'll call on Commissioner Womack for the invocation.
Thank you for this opportunity to do the invocation for today. I'd like to call up the Leoya family interpreter, Pastor Seku, to lead us in prayer on a very historical day in Kent County. I also just want to acknowledge just the professionalism of this board as we go through turbulent times nationally, statewide, and sometimes locally, that just working with commissioners that have learned that coming here, we knew we'd have a situation that we agree to disagree, but still be respectful of each other. And that is definitely an honor serving with all eighteen of my colleagues here. I do ask Pastor Seku to give us prayer for our city and our county today and peace within our community.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to pray with you. Can we close our eyes and let pray, please? Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, I leave the city of Grand Rapids before you today. I pray for your peace to be in this city. We know that it's going to be a crucial day today, that the prosecutor will stand up and give the decision. What I'm asking you is to touch the heart and to bring peace in the heart. Father, we stand against every negative decision to come, to break, to destroy, or to vandalize in the name of Jesus Christ. As for this board, Father, I pray that you will give them wisdom every day to see what the eyes of a human being cannot see, so they can move and they can make a good judgment. I pray for wisdom upon them from the top of their head to the sole of their feet. I pray for unity in Grand Rapids. I break that wall of prejudice and racism that is trying to come in, in the name of Jesus Christ. I pray for unity in this city, Father, and let the blood of Christ cover this city, protect us against every evil spirit that is trying to come to throw our city apart in the name of Jesus. Father, we pray that you will dispatch your angel around this city to protect and to watch over us. And every day when your people meet in the morning to talk, I pray that the peace of Christ will be inside of them and the decision that they will make, it will be for the glorification and to advance the city of Grand Rapids. I thank you so much because you have pointed them, turn their heart, and let their heart be appointed to you in the name of Jesus Christ. Let this city be in your hand today. We just want to see peace. We don't want any blood shedding in this city. We don't want anybody to lose their life as the prosecutor will make the decision. Control the anger, the emotion of the people, because we know it may go both ways, but we want your hand to be here. We don't want to see what happened in other cities to happen in Grand Rapids. So we bind those spirits in the name of Jesus. Thank you for your presence and for the peace of the Holy Spirit. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner and Pastor, for your invocation. All right, for our first special order of business from the United Veterans Council, dealing with several awards, I'm going to call up a number of folks and then we'll proceed. First of all, Eric Nelson, Commander of the United Vets Council. Harold Mast, who we all recognize back there, thank you for being here. And then our honorees, Dean Decanter, Margaret Howard, and Harriet Stirram. Good morning. And also from several offices, Senator Stabano's office, Mr. Peter Dickow, and from Congressman Meyer's office, a gentleman that I see frequently, Bradley Steck. And then I will come join you as well.
Well, I've already been introduced as Eric Nelson. I am the commander of the United Veterans of Kent County. Now, what it is, is an organization whose members are veterans organizations. It's not individuals, it's rather regular organizations. We have about forty different veteran orgs, I'm sorry, organizations, and that represent all of the veterans in Kent County. So it gets out there and it's, it's, there's a lot of knowledge that we try to gather and then head out to help veterans in our area, veterans of need. The three people that we'll introduce later on have gone above and beyond what we normally see in people helping veterans. The first, first person is the Veteran of the Year. That's a, actually a veteran that does a lot for veterans. The next person up is the Associate Member. Our membership is made up of regular 501(c)(19), which is veterans, but we're also associates. We do have associates. And so there we go, that we have an Associate Member that won it this year, wanted. Got it because she deserved it. And then our third award today is for a civilian, a non-connected type person that goes out and beyond to help veterans. So we have three and they're going to have proclamations here.
All right, thank you, Eric. First call on Dean Decanter, if you'll step forward. And I'll present the proclamation. Whereas the United Veterans Council of Kent County annually selects a Veteran of the Year and gives this veteran special recognition. And whereas the 2022 Veteran of the Year is Dean Decanter, an Army veteran who served from 1994 to 2014, receiving numerous medals for exemplary service and honorably discharged as a Sergeant First Class. And whereas the purpose of the Veteran of the Year Award is to recognize Dean for his outstanding service and volunteer contributions towards the betterment of veterans, his organization, and the community as a whole. And whereas Dean has continued to serve to his fellow veterans since active duty discharge by performing leadership duties as the Post Two Finance Officer, Post Two Commander, and CEO of West Michigan Veterans Ranch. And whereas Dean has also assisted local veterans by helping them to find jobs, homes, and by hosting activities for veterans. Now therefore be it resolved that Board Chair Stan Steck and Commissioner Roger Morgan, on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, to hereby congratulate Dean Decanter for being selected as the 2022 Veteran of the Year and thank him for his many years of service to the military and veteran service members of our community. Now, Peter and Brad, if you'll have, you have a presentation as well for them. Senator Stabano's office.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm with Senator Gary Peters' office. But I appreciate the recognition. So, good morning. I'm Peter Dickow, the West Michigan Director for U.S. Senator Gary Peters, who regrets his inability to be with us here today, but he did want me to be here to offer this Certificate of Senatorial Recognition to Mr. Decanter that reads, "In recognition of your excellent support of fellow veterans in the Kent County community." Thank you, sir.
Hi, now Bradley Steck, a district representative from Congressman Meyer's office. He also regrets he could not attend, but he did want to recognize each of the recipients with a congratulatory letter.
You don't have to, but you...
Whew, well, you know. You can say thank you, that's the first. Thank you. It's amazing opportunity to stand here before all of you. We couldn't do it without you. Every day I have a mission and a purpose, to touch people's lives. I want to find a friend, find a need, and make a difference. I want to love each of you equally, no matter what background we come from. I served our flag with honor. I will do that until my dying days. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I would ask Harriet Stirram to step up. Whereas the United Veterans Council of Kent County annually selects an Associate Member of the Year and gives this person special recognition. And whereas the 2022 Associate Member of the Year is Harriet Stirram, wife of Vietnam veteran Rick Stirram, and someone who has spent over twenty years supporting veterans. And whereas the purpose of the Associate Member of the Year Award is to recognize Harriet for her outstanding service and volunteer contributions towards the betterment of veterans, her Associate Member Organizations, and the community as a whole. And whereas Harriet has held leadership roles at the Grand Rapids Home for veterans, United Veterans Council, Wyoming Business Leaders, and more. And whereas Harriet has supported veterans and active duty families for years by writing cards, assembling care packages, and more. Now therefore be it resolved that Board Chair Stan Steck and Commissioner Carol Hennessy, on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate Harriet Stirram for being selected as the 2022 Associate Member of the Year and thank her for her many years of service to the veterans of this community. This is Peter Dickow from Senator Peters' office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, thank you, Harriet and Rick. On behalf of Senator Peters is this special certificate of senatorial recognition to Mrs. Harriet Stirram in recognition of your continued support of veterans throughout the work of the American Legion, Northeastern Post 459, and so many other organizations.
Spoken like a pro.
Thank you all this morning for coming. It's been an honor and a privilege to be here. It's also been an honor and a privilege to do what I do always for my veterans. Our America would not be our America if it were not for each and every veteran, no matter where, when, and how they served. So I thank you again for the privilege and honor for being here. Thank you.
All right, now ask Margaret Howard to step forward. Whereas the United Veterans Council of Kent County annually selects a Raising Up Veterans of the Year Award winner and gives this person special recognition. And whereas the 2022 Raising Up Veterans of the Year recipient is Margaret Howard, wife, sister, daughter, and granddaughter of military veterans from World War I, World War II, Vietnam, and the War on Terror. And whereas the purpose of the Raising Up Veterans of the Year Award is to recognize Margaret for her outstanding service and volunteer contributions towards the betterment of veterans and for going above and beyond in the past year supporting the needs of veterans and their families. And whereas Margaret deserves this award because of her strong demonstrated commitment to those who serve and have served. And whereas Margaret has been involved in many projects, including overseeing the Veterans Portrait, planning Flag Day events, coordinating veteran recognition ceremonies, and others. Now therefore be it resolved that Board Chair Stan Steck and Commissioner Robert Womack, on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate Margaret Howard for being awarded the 2022 Raising Up Veterans of the Year Award and thank her for her many years of service to the veterans of our community.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of Senator Peters, I'm very proud to present this Certificate of Special Senatorial Recognition to Mrs. Margaret Howard in recognition of your active involvement to support veterans and veteran-related causes in Kent County.
I will try to condense this because I think it's so important. Thank you for having us all here today and for all that you do. But I really want to take a moment to thank and honor some of the veterans who I have been blessed to know, who have shared part of their story with me. Veterans who not only impacted our community, but inspired others on their life journey. Dick Buell, United States Navy, World War II, Sonarman, USS Parrot, witnessed the explosion of the atomic bomb. Upon Dick's return to Grand Rapids, he served for thirty-one years with the Grand Rapids Police Department. We lost Dick last week. He'll be laid to rest tomorrow. Bill Iverson, United States Army, World War II veteran. Serving in the segregated troops during World War II, Bill was a Red Ball Express driver, delivering essential supplies to the front lines in Europe. Upon his return, Bill used his GI Bill to not only attain his bachelor's degree, but his master's degree in social work. He did nonprofit work in Chicago, Cleveland, and ultimately worked for thirty years as a professor at Wayne State University, teaching social work. Bill died at the age of one hundred this past fall. We were so blessed to know him. Bob Tesmer, United States Army, World War II. Staff Sergeant Tesmer was just nineteen years old when he was in the ASTP program that was discontinued. The war escalated. He was sent to the front lines, where for one hundred and eighty-seven days straight, he endured combat. He was part of the One Hundredth Infantry Division. And serving with one hundred and eighty-two comrades, he was one of thirteen who survived. A Combat Infantry Badge, two Purple Hearts, a Bronze Star, Presidential Unit Citation, French Legion of Medal of Honor. This gentleman still resides in our community today, and he is an absolute inspiration to us all. Bud Soper, who lives with us, nearing one hundred years old, USS McIntyre, came back from serving in the Navy during World War II and taught at GRCC in Ottawa Hills High School. Russ Coons, World War II Combat Infantry Veteran, came back to Grand Rapids and taught science at Godwin Heights. Dean Gold, one of the first F-86 Korean War fighter pilots. And with me today, behind me, a dear friend of mine, Dwight Coulter, World War II veteran and Korean War veteran. Left Grand Rapids on a train headed to New York City, left the harbor, and served in Italy for two years. After World War II, he re-enlisted to serve during the Korean War. Forever indebted, may we never forget so many of these stories of service and sacrifice. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for being here this morning. It's been a great honor to participate in this experience. Thank you. Our next item of Special Order of Business is Lead Outreach and Remediation Report.
Thank you, Chair Steck.
Good morning, Adam London will lead this presentation.
Thank you, Chair Steck, and good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your ongoing commitment to making Kent County the best place possible for all of our families and children. And I want to send out a special thank you to former Chairs Corn Dyke, Solfeldt, and Bolter, who helped make this issue a priority for all of us, and also the families and the organizations who are working with us to advance this issue in the community. As you know, there is no safe level of lead in the human body. It's not healthy, doesn't serve any purpose in the body, and it causes harm in many cases to the development of the internal organs, especially the brain, and can cause challenges to learning and to behavior in small children. So it's a pretty significant problem. Thankfully, we have made significant progress as a nation on this important problem over the past 40-plus years. We removed lead from new paint, we removed lead from gasoline, from toys, from consumer products. Through public health interventions, we've also been removing lead and removing the amount of children with elevated blood lead levels in our communities now for a number of years. We've seen overall the numbers of children with elevated blood lead has crashed to a significant level of improvement over the course of the past couple of generations. However, of course, there is still work to do, and as the Lead Task Force of this commission pointed out a couple of years ago, we want to make that a priority. And so to share some of the perspectives on what we're doing and some improvements and changes that are happening in the community, I brought a small team from our Kent County Health Department to give some perspective on some of these dynamics. First, Paul Bellamy, the environmental epidemiologist, the position that you created a couple of years ago, thank you for that. He's going to give a four- to five-minute presentation on the data. Then our Environment Health Director, Sarah Simmons, is going to talk about the Lead Action Team, the Commissioner Bolter and Mayor Bliss kicked off a couple of years ago. And then finally, Brendan Earl, our Supervising Sanitarium in Environment Health, is going to talk about some of the outputs and the services that are available in the community. So that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you for having me. I wanted to highlight just a couple of the major points over the full lead data report that you shall have in front of you. To kick it off, I wanted to start off with this graph that you can see up here. But I want to touch on one point specifically, and that's in this data report that is created for 2019 and 2020, as well as the data you will see up here on the screen, is what we call deduplicated, and that just simply means that we are taking one child per year and the highest test result of that child for that year. You can see here that, as Dr. London was just talking about a moment ago, the interventions over the last decade really show in this graph where we can see an overall trend decreasing across the state, here not only representing for the state of Michigan, but also Kent County, the urbanized area of Grand Rapids, and Kent County without the urbanized area of Grand Rapids. You can see a very slight increase in the year 2020. This is likely due to the severe decrease in testing that we saw during the pandemic through the year 2020. And to talk a little bit more about that specifically, show you this graph here, which in 2019 can be seen as kind of an example year of what testing normally looks like throughout the year. Comparatively, you can see 2020, where we saw a severe decrease, as I mentioned, in that lead testing. Federal regulations imposing restrictions on the ability of the WIC clinic to be able to test children on Medicaid, ultimately halting it during a time there in 2020 severely cut down the amount of testing that happened within the Kent County Health Department's WIC clinic, as well as the overall testing for Kent County. This shows the importance of that WIC clinic for testing children who are on Medicaid. As you can see, those large decrease in numbers strictly from that clinic not operating. This is a zoomed-in area of the urbanized area of Grand Rapids. Here you can see the broken, you can see it broken down, sorry, into census tracts, and looking at both the orange and the red colors, you can see it representing 10% to 20% or 20% or above of the children who are being tested in that given census tract as testing above the blood lead reference value. Now, this blood lead reference value being mentioned here is 3.5. We'll get to that in just a moment. These areas are very important for us to know as to be able to have our programs have focused education and focused interventions and work with our programs specifically to help within these areas that we know we're seeing a very large amount of children testing above that blood lead reference value. This is the entirety of Kent County. As you can see, this is zoomed out, and this area represents the area of unknown, and I say that because we have a lot of testing information for the urbanized area of Grand Rapids. We perform a lot of testing, we have a lot of programs within that area, and it is important for us to be able to reach out and go into these surrounding municipalities, these surrounding areas and do testing, because even though here you are seeing it colored in, this is done by proportions, by percentages, and we have a very, very low amount of testing within these areas. This very low amount of testing within the areas outside the urban areas of Grand Rapids really tells a story that we need more testing out there to be able to truly understand how children and how many children are potentially be affected by lead within these areas. But even with such low testing, you can see that there are still children in these areas being tested above that blood lead reference value. Talk for just a second about that blood lead reference value. It recently changed, as was adopted this late spring, early summer in 2022, to move from 4.5 down to 3.5. There is no safe level of lead, as it has already been mentioned, and this level will likely continue to drop, not as a moving of the goal line, but as a new initiation of a new area of priority. This is something that will likely, as I said, continue to decrease and will continue to be, hopefully decreased until there is no more lead exposure and/or lead poisoning of children. Here you can see on this graph a very large difference in the amount of that 4.5 to 3.5. Looking retroactively across the last 10 years, that black bar is a representation of the percent increase that is seen when looking at the children based on the 4.5 blood lead reference value over the last 10 years, and comparing that to what we are using now, starting this year in 2022. This likely will show an increase moving forward of the amount of children who need case management, of the amount of referrals Kent County Health Department receives, and the amount of burden on the programming itself. Thank you.
Hello and good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the Lead Action Team today. Before I begin, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Bolter and Grand Rapids Mayor Bliss. Adam alluded to this, or Dr. London alluded to this earlier, but in, while Commissioner Bolter was Chair of the Board of Commissioners in 2020, she and Mayor Bliss came together to co-sponsor the Lead Action Team, and we're very grateful for that. The goal of the, the purpose of the Lead Action Team, or the LAT, as you may hear me call it, is to take the work of the city and county partnerships in the lead space and to take action on the recommendations that were already known, and that's what the focus of the Lead Action Team is. The development of the Lead Action Team was delayed by one year. The initial start time was in early 2020, just before the pandemic started, but because of the pandemic, it got a bit delayed. But we began to assemble the Lead Action Team, specifically the Steering Committee and the structure of the Steering Committee, early in 2021. And by August of 2021, we had our first Lead Action Steering Committee meeting, and it was very exciting for us. The members of the Lead Steering Committee include the City of Grand Rapids, Kent Community Action, Parents for Healthy Homes, Healthy Homes Coalition, Hispanic Center of West Michigan, Cherry Health, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the Kent County Health Department. The Kent County Health Department, for the intent of the Steering Committee is to serve as a backbone agency of the Steering Committee. We facilitate the meetings, we ensure progress, and we also empower community partners who lead the work groups. The Steering Committee provides guidance for the three work groups. The three group work, work groups are named the Clinical, Social Supports, and Environmental Health. They are listed in the order that they were developed, so the first one that really took off was the Clinical Work Group, and this one was very exciting to us because for the first time, the major health systems all came together to discuss the issue of under-testing and lead exposure in our community. And while we have these, these work groups, Kent County Health Department also has subject matter experts participating in all these work groups. One of the, a couple of the things that I would like to highlight from the Lead Action Team include the development of a medical survey to understand the process and the barriers to testing. And as Mr. Bellamy pointed out in the last, in the last presentation, there's a lot of unknowns, and the unknowns are really a significant issue because what's happening is that the privately insured children are not being tested at the frequency of the children who are on Medicaid. And so we really need to, to look into that, investigate what the root cause of that is. So as the, as the Clinical Work Group came together, they developed a medical survey, and the medical survey will be going out to all health systems, all the major health systems, as well as independent providers to determine what those barriers are and the processes for testing to hopefully identify what the issues are so we can increase the testing. The second thing that we've worked on in this was through the Social Supports Team, was to help develop and distribute a community survey to gain baseline information from the community about what they know in terms of lead hazards and lead in general. And what we will do with that information is we will create structured educational outreach opportunities, as well as determine improved ways to deliver services so that we can better reach the people that most need it. And another area was we were able to receive input from the Lead Action Team about our Don't Play Around With Lead campaign. That was launched in, I believe, 2019, and it was a city-county partnership, and at the time, it was highly successful, but it had a very short beginning and stop-start time. So with the support of the Social Supports Team, we were able to get that, get feedback on the campaign, get improved placement of ads, and also prioritization of things that should actually be on the Don't Play Around With website. And lastly, the Environmental Health Work Group, which was ultimately the last work group to, to really become developed in January 2022, has really begun to work very, very diligently to gather working, or organizations that are invested in building up the contractor base in our community to address the lead issues. One of the most, two of the most significant bottlenecks in the issues of the lead space right now are under-testing and lack of contractors to actually do the work. So those are, that's where we're currently at with the Lead Action Team. We've been together for just under a year, and we're really looking forward to the work that we're going to be doing in the future, and looking forward to potentially speaking to you again about the activities that we're, we're working on. So thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Brendan Earl, who's going to talk to you about some of the Kent County Environmental Health Services.
Good morning. Hello. I'm going to, again, like Sarah, I'm going to talk a little bit about the programs and services involved in our lead work. We have three main programs that we work with. We, we look at historical, past historical cases, currently lead poisoned children, and prevention. So we kind of get all three, past, present, and future. The first program I'd like to talk about is what we call the Multiple EBL List. This is a list of homes that have poisoned multiple kids from multiple families throughout the years. Through data verification and prioritization, we've narrowed the list down to 284 homes that we want to focus on. So far, currently, we have reached out to 126 of these properties and provided educational outreach and inspection services. The second program that I like to talk about is what we, what happens when we have a currently lead poisoned child. Usually, it comes in, it comes from a referral from our Community Wellness Division. We contact the family, we provide, again, inspection services and further education, and it's things like providing cleaning materials, talking to the family about how to properly clean the home to reduce any kind of lead exposure. And after the inspection services, if they qualify, we try to move them into our CHIP program. The CHIP program is something we work with with the City of Grand Rapids, and it provides financial aid to homeowners and landlords to remediate lead in the home and protect the children. And this remediation and the funds, it provides things like ways to cover up lead-based paint, contaminated soils. It can also provide things like new doors, new windows, siding, you know, anything that we can do to make sure that that, that home is, is lead-safe. And then the third program that we work with is what we call Ready by Five, and this really focuses on prevention. So a lot of times for this, we can, we can work with anyone, any pregnant resident or a home that has a child under six in it, and we do, one of the first things we do is a service we call the Home Health Screening. This is when we go into the home and do an inspection to look for lead hazards and other safety issues, things like asthma triggers or other physical hazards within the house. So, and we also provide through this program a lot of other educational outreach, educational outreach opportunities. We go out and put out to different community events and put out tables, hand out flyers, and try to educate the public a little bit more about lead. So across all three of these programs, since the beginning of 2020, we have performed over 405 inspections. And the backbone of these inspections is what we call ALIRA. It's a Lead Inspection Risk Assessment. It's something that our sanitarians at the Health Department had to be certified by the state for, and there's also a lot of state oversight in how you perform the inspection. These inspections can easily take over 40 hours per sanitarium for the inspection itself and the reporting that, again, is audited by the state. These inspections, if you went to a private contractor, would cost somewhere between $470 and $620, and this is a service that we can provide free to residents who qualify. That's a little bit of a summary of the programs and services that we do. I'm going to hand it back off to Adam London for any kind of questions.
All right, good. Thank you for those presentations. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Wooden, you're raising your hand and pointing at the same time.
I was going to raise my hand, but seeing that Commissioner Bolter has taken such leadership on this, I was going to defer to my colleague.
Right, well done. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those of you who know me know I'm not known for my patience, so I really appreciate all the work that has been done on this, given the pandemic year that we lost. I remember when that, I can't remember what acronym you used for the multiple offender homes, but that was up over 400 homes at one point. I really glad we have the structure in place, glad we have the committees in place, but we purposely put the word "action" in that, in that program, and I know that there are a pediatric group collaborative in the, in the county. I don't remember what, what it's called, but all the pediatrician groups get together. And when I took my sons in a couple of years ago and asked about getting tested for lead, they, they didn't think it was necessary, but they didn't even screen for whether we had a home that was over 1978, older than 1978. So I don't know if it's a private insurance issue that they don't want to cover it, I don't know if the pediatricians just don't understand the need, or if we could even just get a screening situation in place for those pediatricians because the kids in the out county are just as important as the kids in the inner city, and I just really hope that we continue to focus on getting the system in place and getting it to take action. And, and I, I really, again, applaud your efforts so far and appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bolter, for those comments. I think we share that frustration, is that we're very much seeing that children who live in the urban core are getting tested at a much higher rate than those who are living out county, and that has a lot to do with Medicaid. But private insurance covers the testing if the qualifying criteria are met. And so we're trying to understand, as Sarah mentioned, more clearly, what's the barrier then? We need to get all these kids tested. I've had the same experience that you had with my children, and the question didn't come up until I pressed it, and that, that shouldn't happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I was writing on that comment, I was wondering whether or not it, the difference was because Medicaid reimbursed and not, not all private insurers do. Is it also a requirement that Medicaid patients get a lead blood test?
It is if they're in the WIC program. And the WIC program drives a lot of the testing. As you saw from the data slides, we saw a dip in testing in 2020 and into 21. As you saw from the data slides, we saw a dip in testing in 2020 and into 21 because there was a waiver given to the WIC program where, because of the pandemic, those appointments became virtual. While the waiver's still in place, we're seeing that those appointments are really resuming back in person much, at a much higher rate. We expect that waiver is going to end probably in the next October anyway. So we think those numbers are going to increase for the WIC program testing as well, but otherwise it's not, it's not required, but it is there and present for all Medicaid families and for private insurance, privately insured families as well.
So my, my follow-up question on, on testing is, given that there is some disparity in what insurers will provide, will pay for testing and what won't, have we ever, I mean, I imagine, given the data that's available to us, I mean, we are the, we are the county that issues the birth certificate, so we know who's turning one every year. And we have a decent sense of the proportions of which children are on Medicaid, which children are on private insurance. Have we ever modeled how much it would cost to reimburse those patients that don't have Medicaid? Because this is a relatively inexpensive test.
Yeah, we haven't modeled that. It's a great question that we can look into, absolutely.
And going from testing to remediation, I know in the past there's been discussion about a pay-for-success model to help increase the funds available for remediation. If I recall, it's, given the savings are so, the, the benefits and the savings from that are more stretched out over time, it's been more difficult, but has that been revisited?
It has been. And to be perfectly honest, we haven't looked at it much in the past couple of years because of the pandemic, but there was a lot of conversation around creating some pay-for-success zones around that. Now, the challenge becomes, as you referred to, in defining success and, and establishing those metrics for long-term success with something that you often don't see those benefits for a decade or two. But I think there, there is an opportunity perhaps in some areas of the community to explore that in greater depth. And I know there are some groups locally who would like to do that as well, so we'll certainly entertain those conversations and follow where they lead if it makes sense for the community.
And my last question, amongst those repeat offenders, those homes that have had, that have poisoned multiple children, I, I believe I know the answer to this question, but do we have a percentage of how many of those are owner-occupied versus rentals?
About 50/50 is what I'm hearing.
Okay, about 50/50. And, you know, in terms of the inspection services that we've been able to provide, is it skewed more that the owner-occupied homes have been more responsive to those requests than the, than the rentals?
You know, I don't refer to the team. It seems like in general we've gotten a pretty good response from everyone because of the availability of chip funds. And so the availability of resources to help homeowners, whether they be a landlord situation or a privately-owned or resided-in home, those have been available for the most part. The challenge has been getting the contractors. And that's kind of with a testing, getting universal testing, is getting the contractors available. So we really don't work with the Home Builder Association, with perhaps GRCC and other educators locally for how can we create more opportunities for the certification, the training for, for contractors so that we get more people in the field so that they can follow up with, with homes regardless of what kind of ownership status they have to get that correction made as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Commissioner Poncel.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So Dr. London, thanks for being here today. I don't really have a question, I just want to highlight a comment that you made right off the bat. You know, we live in a country, whenever there's a toxic spill or anything that can enter the human body, the first thing the federal government thinks we need to do is find an acceptable level so then we can wash our hands of it. I just want to reiterate what you said, that there is no acceptable level of lead in any human being, period. And thank you for pointing that out because that's the most important thing that people tend to forget, that if we get to an acceptable level, everything's gone. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that as, as well. And to reiterate that, it has no beneficial, there's no other purpose for lead in the body and we're finding more, we think about this in terms of children a lot, but we're now starting to see data that says this is also an issue for those, the rest of us who are aging because the body often confuses a, a lead molecule, for a calcium molecule, and so stores away lead in parts of our body like bones, which later as through degeneration of, of bones can release lead back into the body at later stages in life, perhaps contributing to dementia and other problems later on in life. So it truly is a problem for, for everyone in the community.
Vice Chair Breevey.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I had the honor, you know, a number of years ago now, serving on the Lead Task Force and it seems like some of the problems that were happening then, you know, trying to do remediation are still around, like finding contractors and all of that. So, you know, I'm sitting here trying to think of ways. I know a lot of contractors in my day job. You know, I think ABC West Michigan, they have a new facility that works with GRCC. I think creating some curriculum to address lead in homes could be really helpful. I also understand that there is a shortage and, you know, that's one of the reasons why that organization has started that training facility. But what can we do to get contractors to help in this situation? I would like to help you think creatively about this and I think, you know, one of the big reasons is probably the cost. I mean, the cost of supplies these days is really high and also the, the hourly wages. So is there something that we can do to maybe supplement that, to make it more appealing to have these contractors work on this project? You know, it's not acceptable to continue to have lead in our community even though it's, you know, gone down, like you said. But I'd like to work with you guys, work together a little bit more and, you know, bridge that gap so we can fix these homes.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly want to hear from them to help understand more clearly what the obstacles are so we can create interventions that, that make sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
My question was along the lines of Commissioner Breevey's in that there was the, the comment here, there's, you know, lack of contractors to do the work. And, you know, how, how are we approaching that? What are we doing to find the contractors or to train people or to, you know, what are, what are we doing?
Yeah, so we have with the Lead Action Team, you want to talk to that, Sarah, really to understand what those problems are and then to work for.
Hi, Commissioner Hennessy. One of the goals right now is that, as I mentioned in the presentation, that the Environmental Health Group is the group that, that's their area of focus. And the City of Grand Rapids is working, is the lead of that work group. And they are working to bring together, link up GRCC and some of those other agencies that we had, that had come up earlier to really organize, figure out what the barriers are, you know. Off the top of my head, I can tell you one of the barriers ours is a lot easier in terms of regulation to go build a new house than it is to clean up lead. It's faster and it's, it's more, they can make more money on it. So I think that, you know, I, to what Commissioner Breevey was saying is I think it's going to take some creativity and some innovative ideas to really figure out how to bring people into this workspace and want to stay there because they do have to go through trainings and there, it is quite a process. So I hope that helped, that it's underway, the short answer.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are, are we doing the trainings then of, of contractors? Are we training people?
The county doesn't specifically do the trainings. That's usually through LinkUp or through GRCC or another partner. Home Repair Services has become their, started picking up their remodel, renovation and painting trainings, so that is underway. But it's kind of, it's still kind of slow because of the pandemic. People are getting their feet back underneath them, so that's kind of where we're at. So we're kind of unfortunately at the beginning again.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that, you know, Kent County and the City of Grand Rapids convened the initial task force and that it has not been dropped. We've continued to work, we've continued to emphasize the, get the lead out. And, and I'm really pleased, I mean, things, unfortunately, things can't happen as fast as we would all like, but, but it is important that we have continued with our own persistence to follow this problem.
Another solution we're working on in that space is trying to bundle the projects together. So as Sarah mentioned, the regulations and the inspections and the checkpoints in the midst of a progress, a project can be rather onerous for a contractor, making it much more efficient for their time to work on other site, sites, sorts of projects on other sites as opposed to this. But if we can bundle a number of projects together, that, that creates a situation where they're not leaving equipment parked on one site waiting for an inspector, waiting for a certain, you know, checkpoint to be, to be hit.
Thank you. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Just to, to pile on the contractor question, do we have a, a time investment and dollar figure for getting that certification? Like how, is that a, a year-long training? Is that, can you do it in three months? Do we know how long it takes to get certified?
Yeah, for that contractor training, that's usually done by the State of Michigan. And depending on, on what type of certification you have, whether you're a supervisor or you're just a, a normal worker, it can be anywhere between two days and, and a week, you know, for this certification. So it's not, you know, but again, you do have delancing and all that kind of stuff. But I, I think the biggest thing is, what Sarah kind of talked about is that, you know, if you can make more money in the private sector building a house and you don't have to have the training, right? And you don't have to have the oversight by us or other, you know, inspectors that make sure the house is clear of lead, you know, you're going to go kind of that way, right? So, yeah, it's, it's not just training, but it's also the availability of people that want to do it and making it worthwhile for them. Thanks.
Okay, and then my follow-up to that is that if we have these market forces, you know, kind of working against us, in this case, are there perhaps statewide contractors who, you know, travel around doing this kind of work? Is there a specialty, rather than relying on hoping that local contractors will decide to do it even though it's not the most profitable thing? Are there, is there any kind of contractor statewide that would come and, and work here temporarily?
Well, I think the, the demand for this work is, is pretty universal across the state. You know, this is certainly not the only area that has this sort of demand. So I think everywhere is seeing challenges with, with the labor force and having enough contractors to do the work, whether it's Flint or Detroit or anywhere else. So while some do come in from, out of county, it's really, it's a problem everywhere, especially exacerbated now because of some of the labor shortages that we all see.
All right, Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Adam, and the team at the Health Department for your work on this. I think it's, we're making progress, which is a good thing. We, we looked at the map and of course I, I understand that the best use of our time and resources and dollars is to start where the, where the need is the greatest and we're, you know, talking about the 503 zip code and, and putting things there. But when we talk about that, the area of unknown and that, that's, you know, a lot of my district and, and my neighborhood is in that area. And obviously, you know, we, there are many homes built prior to 1978 in those areas. And when we get into the out county areas, especially, especially I think, some of the more rural areas, you're going to see older homes and that sort of thing. So my, my question is kind of twofold. So how do we get to people that aren't getting testing somewhere else through a benefit that they're receiving or that sort of thing? And then at what point can we start, are we going to have the luxury, I guess would be a way to put it, to start looking into those areas where we, you know, obviously, again, the condensed areas are where we're going to see a lot of return on investment. But how do we start to tackle that problem and identify the scope of the problem elsewhere in the county?
Yeah, so I think we need to communicate the need and the severity of the issue to providers who serve the people who live in those parts of the county. I think there is an assumption made by many that it's not a problem in the rural areas. And to your point, there's a lot of older housing, especially in agricultural areas of the community that date back 100 years or more. So communicating and expressing the severity of the issue to providers is important and continuing to work on, on parents. And they're really the, you know, the primary individuals responsible, you know, for the well-being of their children. We need to make sure that they understand the importance of this as well. And then having the opportunities for testing available. Certainly we want physicians asking for testing or the need for testing when they go to the doctor's office. We want parents asking as well. We've thought about ways, how do we make it more available in the community itself? You know, we have our mobile units, perhaps we can use those in some kind of way, but we have to make sure that the message is correct, the testing locations are correct. We have to make sure that the calibration, the sensitivities on the testing equipment is going to work in that sort of environment. We are exploring those questions, but we definitely recognize that those gaps in that map is, is a problem.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think that, you know, potentially with the new site where we have in Cedar Springs, that could be a, a use to reach some of those people, especially in the rural agricultural northern parts of the county. So, thank you very much.
And it will be available at that north county clinic.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Adam, just maybe some education here and maybe to confirm what I've been taught and learned over the years. I had a home several years ago on the northwest end that, that went through the Get the Lead Out program. And it's my understanding with windows opening and shutting and that paint and that wood rubbing and doors opening, closing and that pinch points getting rubbed, that there's that dust that gets on children's toys or in the house and it tastes like Sweet Tarts. So when you see a young child really, you know, going through the teething process, sucking on toys, that, that, that sweet taste is just awesome for, you know, awesome tasting for him. And that is part of the problem. Can you just maybe go on that, that education part of that a little bit?
Yeah, you're, you're spot on, especially during that phase when they're crawling on their hands and their feet through the toddler ages where they've got their hands on window sills, their hands are all in that lower, you know, two-foot perimeter of, of the room where most of the dust is going to accumulate. You're right, it has a sweet taste to it. And so that hand-to-mouth behavior, which is normal anyway, is further exacerbated by the fact that now they get sweetness on their hands. Window panes and, and doorways tend to be concerning areas because of those friction points on the paint. A lot of paint in other areas you can't encapsulate with, with latex paint or other things. It's harder on older frames like that. We also have the issue of dust in the environment. So dust that is brought in, in silt and soil on people's feet and shoes as they're entering the home. Because we've had gasoline with lead for many, many years and we've had lead in the paint that has flaked off sides of houses for many years. It also is present in the dirt around some of these older homes and around areas where there are large, you know, roads and highways and things like that where it has settled into the soil and brought inside. And that also gets on their, their hands. And so, yeah, it's the, the, the size of children and their behaviors that makes them particularly at risk as opposed to, you know, taller people and adults. So that, that's a challenge and the sweetness is a major factor.
Great. And those programs have also been expanded. I believe Get the Lead Out was originally just a Grand Rapids program and that program has now since countywide or a larger area, correct?
Correct.
So it's important to, to let folks know that these services are available from, from our standpoint and, you know, the, the county's standpoint as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, good to see you, Adam London, and thank you for your tremendous work on Get the Lead Out and other programs. I was going to ask, what type of, what, what type of exposure do we have on the Kent County Health Department's website that's telling people where they can get training and certify or how people can get more involved in this? And, because as you explain it and we talk about it, it seems like there's just a lot of major resources that are out there, but just look at how we could connect community members with what you're doing.
Yeah, so we do have information on the website and we've had the, the Don't Play Around campaign issue linked through the website for a while. To be honest, we don't think that a lot of people go to our website for primary information about this all issue or anything else. So it's how do we use our social media outreach better? How do we use our partner networks better? How do we use our communications to more actively push the information to the community instead of waiting them to come to our website? But for your sake and for others here, we do have information on the website if you want to point people to it or bring it to their attention.
All right, because, because what's good about it being on the website is a lot of this extensive information can be there for people to read through. Also, your algorithm for your social media would be that if you put it on your social media, but if you're not engaging within those, those different social media communities, they're not going, it's not going to come up in their feed. So I just wanted to know where it is. If it's on your social media, then we can start letting people in the community know to start linking people to that. Also, some of the programs that you mentioned, I actually went to the City of Grand Rapids about two, three years ago to bring in some minority contractors into an office and have them call one of these places that you mentioned, that I knew Grand Rapids had gave funds for certification and to help with some training. And they called in the office so that they could hear this organization say, no, we don't offer those training. I had knew from the Grand Rapids budget that they had received it. Soon after that, maybe three months, they did start the training. So we just need a lot of oversight in this too, to make sure that those trainings are there. And this might be out of your purview, but in our community, some of the numbers are going down into 07 because we don't have renters' protection. What happened is, as renters began, for the homeowners, it was working very good because they're dealing with the city, the county and people and Paul Hahn, they're dealing with healthy homes and people. So if you were the homeowner, it was fine, but if you were a renter, the- it was fine. But if you were a renter, the landlords would call you a whistleblower. And we were going down to courts watching these renters. If it got through our neighborhood, if you tell you got lead in here, and it cost this landlord a dime, he just, when it comes back up to renew your contract, your lease, he just doesn't renew it. And that got through our community fast. Have you heard any problems or had any complaints?
Not recently. Well, there are, there are laws that protect tenants from that sort of behavior. So perhaps we need to work on making that legal protection more readily known.
Yeah, to make sure the judges are honoring it, because the landlords are able to buy lawyers, some have one retainer. And a lot of times, I would go to court, the renter just couldn't afford a lawyer, and we would take them to legal assistance, and they would say, basically, they couldn't help, because they would help more on the criminal, you know, charges, but not on something that was in court like that. So the renters are at a big disadvantage, so.
I'll make sure that we are covering that in our consult with families that do have EBLL and their family, to make sure they know what legal protections are there for them.
Well, thank you so much, because I know you care, and I know that we can't, no one can pay you enough to do the job you do. So keep it a good work, Adam.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, Adam, I do have one for you. So the conversation in Kent County about lead tends to be all about lead paint and addressing that. In the state, though, the conversation tends to be about lead water or lead through water supply systems. Do we have that issue in Kent County? And if so, what's the extent of that?
Not that we have identified with any significance. So through the work of our lead task force, we clearly identified that here in Kent County, our issues are predominantly driven by lead paint, lead dust. And I even looked at the isotopes of lead that are there, and there are isotopes that originate from dust and not water. And so while there are isolated situations, they usually relate to fixtures that someone has in their home that may have lead content in them, as opposed to the water supply systems that belong to the municipality. The vast majority of our lead issues here are driven by lead paint, lead dust.
Because it seems like the remediation dollars that come out of the state are, and they're significant dollars, are focused on fixing these water systems that are the cause. Don't seem to see similar kind of funding from the state for lead paint. Am I accurate on that?
Well, sorry, I think what happened in Flint has been on driver for...
And now Baton Harbor.
Yeah, exactly. For lead-based water lines. And they are a vulnerability. So while we aren't seeing that currently the lead issue in places like Kent County is driven by water-based lead contamination, the fact that we have these older lead water lines, it remains a vulnerability. If something were happening which could disturb, disrupt them, and then they could release lead into the water, that's a possibility. But to date, it hasn't been the problem here.
Is there a lot of lead lines in those service lines in Kent County that is just sort of latent and...
Hi. So when the lead copper rule came into place, cities with customers over 60,000, I think it was over 80,000 people, had to have what's called a Water Advisory Council. And I'm lucky enough to be able to participate in the City of Grand Rapids Water Advisory Council. The City of Grand Rapids water system is extremely proactive when it comes to lead lines. And for many years, the issue was that they could only change the line out up until the private portion of the water supply. So now they've been able to move toward, with grant funding, they have a $5.1 million grant right now through the EPA to focus, to do focus on areas of need, to be able to get into those really specific areas that have high densities of partial and private and public lines, so they can do more aggressive changing out of lines. And so they're very, very proactive. On the City of Grand Rapids website, you can actually look up by address whether or not you have a public lead line or a private lead line, or a, you know, to know if the whole thing is completely lead. So it's very transparent on the City of Grand Rapids Water Supply website on where the lead lines are and the highest concentrations are.
So we don't, we don't think we have a time bomb sitting there. As I recall, with Flint, the same thing, it was fine until there was a disruption in the system, and then that triggered the kind of lead contamination. So...
I think that's more of a nuanced question that would be best responded to by the City of Grand Rapids Water System. So I'm gonna step away from that one. But if you'd like, I can have the City of Grand Rapids Water Supply Superintendent reach out to you.
Well, I just want to make sure we're proactively assessing that, because again, it can sit there and not be a problem, and then something changes, and now suddenly you have a catastrophe on your hands. So are we assessing that? Do we know the extent of that risk and so on?
Yes, and I'll pass it on.
Yeah, I think, you know, something that was very unique in Flint was they changed their water source. And we certainly have no expectation that's ever gonna happen here in that our water source is like Michigan. So when they moved to a much more aggressive, corrosive water source, that's, and didn't have the appropriate treatment in place of that, that's what exacerbated the problem there. I don't expect that we're sitting on a time bomb here, because I don't expect that we're gonna destabilize or change our water source that way.
Okay. What did I do? I started round two. Commissioner Womack.
This is real short. Just wanna say, Chair Stuck, thanks to your brother who assisted me in making sure that the minority contractors that came during that time were all certified to inspect for lead and work on lead in homes. And sometimes he even had to send them outside of Grand Rapids for training or outside of the county. But your brother did a great job with assisting us on getting all six of those people certified.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. Stuck Family Day today. I don't know if you know that. Did I have another, Commissioner Antor?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly, to your point, I remember back when this was starting to explode with the Flint water crisis. I talked to an engineer that actually testified in Flint regarding the infrastructure. And he said, our infrastructure below Grand Rapids is almost an exact model of what they have in Flint. They were installed almost the same time, same, you know, infrastructure, pretty much. The difference was, we've been treating our system. And that, in his view, that was the only reason we're safe, and they weren't, because of the treatment that went into those systems. The disruption in water supplies, I'm not sure if that was as big, I don't know, as the fact that we've been treating, apparently they weren't treating the systems as aggressively, from what I understood. But I, you know, I'm not an expert.
Yep. So I think the point for us is, we're aware of it, we're monitored it, we don't see any looming risk from the water system. Okay, thank you. That's everything. Thank you for your presentation this morning. We'll now move to the next item, which is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission on matters that are on the agenda, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name. And you have up to three minutes. Did I just see you last night?
You did. It's me, DeAndre Jones, stay at 967 Temerack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan Northwest. One thing I didn't hear, which I didn't expect to hear, is that we actually have more lead in the homes on the south side of Grand Rapids than the Flint water crisis. Majority of those people stay in Grand Rapids. Those are African-American people that usually stay majority on the south side. And so I would like you guys to support any type of partnership with the city, any type of funding, anything that the county can do, because the City of Grand Rapids is in Kent County. And so I would like for you guys to make sure that those homes that, I'm not too sure how much of the advertising and marketing that the city has done, to make sure that those people know. But I know I spoke about it, but I'm only one person in it. If I could, even if I can help let the community know over there, like, this is terrible, there's no reason that kids should be grown up. There's a lot of young mothers and young fathers that stay on the south side of Grand Rapids, and they don't know that their kids are breathing in lead paint. And so I would definitely like an effort, a strong effort, for you guys to make sure that that community knows, because like I said, the City of Grand Rapids, the south side, has more lead paint in the houses than the Flint water crisis. That is a problem. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You are only one, but you're pretty ubiquitous.
Hi, my name is Carla Wagner, and I live in Rockford. I didn't know I was gonna be here to speak about this today, because I didn't know this was on the agenda. But I do have my general contractor's license, I do have my builder's license, and I also have a real estate license. So I know a little bit, and I took this, I took this abatement class certification probably about five years ago. It was pretty difficult with the requirements of what you had to do to abate lead paint in houses. It was pretty cumbersome, so I can imagine why most contractors don't even want to go near it. It was how it had to be taken out of the house, everything that you had to do, where, you know, you had to be all suited up, you had to have hip filter, filters on, masks on. You had to collect all of the dust from the abatement, the paint that you were chipping off or taking off, you had to collect it all. And then it was like, how in the heck are you gonna dispose it? Where? Because nobody wants you to dispose of it anywhere. So that was a really, you know, an eye-opener. But I think, one, so, and again, and it's not just the paint. When you talk about having money available to help these people with these issues, you know, when you have to address the paint, you usually have to take the window trim off, you have to take the door trim off. A lot of cabinets, like kitchen cabinets, have painted backs, you know, if they're not a cabinet that has a wood back when it is adhered to the wall, it has a paint. So now you're trying to, like, do things inside of people's kitchen cabinets and in their closets and everything. So it's, it's pretty, it really gets to be involved when you're talking about trying to abate lead paint in a house. But I think there is, one of the, you talked about the HBA, which I am a member of, but as a real estate agent, I'm also a member of GRAR. We have to have people sign a lead-based paint addendum, basically, or disclosure every time we sell a house, if that house was built prior to 1978. I would get with GRAR and probably try to set up an appointment or some kind of an agreement with them if you're trying to get the word out that you have these funds available, because they sell these houses every day of the week. So I think that would be a good partnership as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Womack. You're back.
I'd like to move the consent agenda to approve our minutes for May 26-22 meeting and our May 31 Finance Committee meeting.
Supported by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. If not, this is roll call. Adam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Skaggs...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
LaGrande...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Jones...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Burrow...
Yes.
Wocowski...
Vice Chair Brevi...
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. I'll now move to item 8, 8A, for resolutions, and call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 69 of today's date, request to add one lieutenant and two sergeants to supervise the animal control in the sheriff's office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. As I mentioned in Finance Meeting, this, the price tag on this was kinda difficult for me to understand because of the fact that we're hiring supervisors, and the cost is pretty substantial. And I didn't feel real comfortable, because I wasn't sure what the return on investment would be, you know, how bad things have gotten. So I appreciate the fact that Sheriff Young and Chris Becker, I talked to both of them kind of off the record a little bit about the situation. And it just seems that, you know, we live in a litigious society now, where all these lawsuits are springing up. And we've had some issues dealing with animal control issues, with dog attacks and things of that nature. We've actually been pretty fortunate, I suppose, that we didn't get caught in that crossfire. But I was convinced by both of them that this is something that needed to be done. I think when we shifted from the Sheriff's Department over to the Health Department back in the, maybe the seventies, it was done because we had a grant to do so. And so sometimes the grant money compels you to do things that maybe you shouldn't. And I think that was a situation there. I think this, it falls in line with, it's hard to, just because of the society we live in, it's weird to think that the Sheriff's Department should be handling, you know, animal control calls. But I think it's gonna be in the right place. I'm looking at this as, you know, a catch-up measure to get up to speed with the rest of the counties and the state. There is a price tag involved in this, but I feel better now after talking to Chris and to the sheriff about this situation. I'm comfortable with it, more so now than I was before the Finance Meeting.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner LaGrande.
I want to agree with Commissioner Antor on that, that I was surprised to learn that this, that our animal control had originally been in the sheriff's department, and that it is appropriate for it to return. And I really want to thank Administrator and all the staff for doing the work session to help explain all of this to us, because it did seem like a really big change and a question about whether we were getting law enforcement more involved than it needed to be. I feel very comfortable with it, and I'm glad for the education. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? If not, it is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 69, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Skaggs...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
LaGrande...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Jones...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Burrow...
Yes.
Wocowski...
Vice Chair Brevi...
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 69er is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8B and call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 70. It's from the Fiscal Services and the Administrator's Office, and it's fiscal year-end change.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. All right, again, this is another one that we've talked about in work sessions. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll go ahead and ask for the roll call on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 70, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Skaggs...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
LaGrande...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Jones...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Burrow...
Yes.
Wocowski...
Vice Chair Brevi...
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 70 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move item 71, Resolution 71 of today's date, use of federal coronavirus relief funding from our Administrator's Office.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Any conversation, questions, comments? I see
none. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 71, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Skaggs...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
LaGrande...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
Jones...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Green...
Yes.
Burrow...
Yes.
Wocowski...
Vice Chair Brevi...
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter...
Yes.
Antor...
Yes.
Chair Stuck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 69er is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8B and call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 70. It's from the Fiscal Services and the Administrator's Office, and it's fiscal year-end change.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. All right, again, this is another one that we've talked about in work sessions. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll go ahead and ask for the roll call on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 70, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Womack...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Skaggs...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Morgan...
Yes.
McLeod...
Yes.
LaGrande...
Yes.
I see none, so Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-two, one, um, sorry, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Wachowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck, or Chair Steck.
Yes.
Sorry for the demotion, Mr. Chair.
I've been there before.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-two is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight E, and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move Resolution seventy-three of today's date from our Kent County Community Action Weatherization Program Grant from our Kent County Community Action.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Any discussion, questions, comments? I see none, so Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, on the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-three, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Wachowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-three is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight F, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution seventy-four of today's date from the Board of Commissioners Office, which is the appointments.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Burl. Commissioner Womack.
You look alike, I understand.
Don't get me started.
Brothers.
Brothers. Any questions or comments? Oh, yes, Commissioner Breevy. Vice Chair Breevy.
I um just wanted to thank those that applied for these positions and also those on the interview team. Uh, we had a great number of applicants, very um, a good variety of people that wanted to get involved in Kent County. So I always appreciate that for citizen involvement. Um, you know, I, I definitely am excited for these people to serve our community, so thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for your work and all of you that worked on that. Yes, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say thank you to everyone who did serve on that um board as well, or that committee. Um, it's good to see diversity when we're working with the board, so thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-four, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Wachowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-four is adopted.
Thank you. And before someone calls it to my attention, I'll take a harder look whether it really is a roll call. I'm not sure about that. Um, all right, let's move to item eight G, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution seventy-five of today's date, the nine eleven plan adoption.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. Any questions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna have to abstain because I'm part of this plan. And uh, uh, I remember in nineteen eighty-six when we first passed this plan. And I think what we're doing today is codifying all the amendments we've had over the years, and it's nice to be part of the plan. Thank you.
So I, I'm aware of the conflict and, and accept that it's been approved, uh, your excuse from participating in any of the comments about this. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Uh, not really a comment on the plan. Appreciate all the work that went forward to it. My question is more during our conversation at the Legislative Committee is that this still isn't uh being funded uh fully by another source, that some still comes from the county. So my question is, can we get an update, and it doesn't have to be today, but maybe via email on our efforts to ensure that our mobile and cell phone companies are not only collecting the fee, but making sure the fee gets to the right governmental units, uh, that that was supposed to be collected for. I know that's been a problem in the past, and it's been arisen again, but I see more and more of a move that uh landlines will soon become a thing of the past, which was, seemed to be a more accountable way to collect that fee, so. Any information would be appreciated.
We will provide that.
Any other comments, questions? All right, if not, uh, this is a roll call, not because it's a financial approval, but by statute, so we'll go ahead and take the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-five, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Abstained.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Wachowski. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yeses, zero nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-five is adopted.
Thank you for that. We'll now move to item nine, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission on matters within our jurisdiction, you may do so. Please identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
My name is Scott Atchison, and it's pretty loud. But I'm, I'm here to talk to you about county matters. I'm here just to talk to you about the county seat downtown. You know, but around the whole county, I think the county's doing good. The airport is doing exceptionally well, but I want to talk about downtown Grand Rapids, where we need an information system. Nobody knows what's open. Little story, on May twenty-eighth, I had to run down to the post office and get something postmarked by the twenty-eighth. So I take Division Street down, then I go down to Franklin, then I'm gonna take Ionia from Franklin all the way up to Michigan Street to go to the post office. Soon as I get south of the Van Andel, I see everybody dancing around with their cell phones, looking for information. I did not see one ambassador anywhere. So any assistance from you people to talk to the Convention and Visitor Bureau, Downtown Development Authority, those two entities, also known as Experience GR and Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., they need to create an information system daily. You know, it's, it's crazy that you have all these downtown ambassadors. It's a million-dollar contract this year with the city, but they have no information. If you, if I would give you an assignment, go talk to a downtown ambassador and ask him, what time does the Gerald R. Ford Museum close? What are the movie theater times? There's a movie theater downtown? People don't know this. So this is what I'm assuming, that basically, you guys know how QR codes and website works. The problem is, nobody is updating their websites daily. Nobody. Convention and Visitor Bureau doesn't do it, DowntownGR.org doesn't do it. We need to create a daily information system so everybody knows what's open. And if you remember that Go site that was inside the Grand Rapids Art Museum, that failed because they had no information system. You would walk in there and they would Google what you could Google, because everybody has a cellphone. So this is what I'm envisioning. Somebody at the DDA's expense or Convention and Visitor Bureau expense should take their staff and, and create a daily list, and every day, the information changes. My point is, you need to have the information so good so every restaurant can have a food special every day. The museums, hours of operation, everything. So you create a QR code so you can take a picture of it, then it goes to your phone, and then everything is linked, the address, phone number, website, but the information's gotta be so good. But so I'm saying, it should be at like the ExperienceGR.com slash DowntownInfo, or DowntownGR.org slash Info, so you could either do a website or on your phone, but it goes to the same website. So every day, everybody knows what's open, and you guys could use this. If you have a visitor that comes in town, you can say, hey, we have the best information for downtown. It's kind of sad, you know, I don't know how many dozens of people worked in the Convention and Visitor Bureau. There's fifteen to eighteen people in the DDA offices, plus a million-dollar contract with these ambassadors, but we have no information system. It just blows my mind. You know, we're not using our assets greatly, and that's, but people want to know what's open daily between restaurants and bars, museums, retail shopping, movie times, festivals, and what's happening at the convention center and public transportation. I hope the, this thing should explain everything to you, but, and everybody has a cellphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome back.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My name is DeAndre Jones, stay in the city of Grand Rapids, nine six seven Temerick, uh, Grand Rapids, Michigan Northwest. I'm here to talk about a community project that I'm trying to build, uh, ten, not ten years ago. But uh, in twenty eighteen, I actually won a grant to partner with the city of Grand Rapids. I was one of the winners of the Safe Pitch Task Force. Um, I end up creating a program called Jump Ahead at the time. I partnered with a faith-based nonprofit, Steeple Town Neighborhood Services on the Northwest, so I know Mr. Wachowski's brother. Um, I did this work. I worked with some of the worst kids in our neighborhood. I actually partnered with uh Union High School. I took some of the worst kids uh from that school. I gave them stipends, service learning, special events. We got them credentials on their resumes so they can be able to have the, um, just the basic skills they, they need to operate a jobs, um, operations. And so um, this project was successful. I ended up winning an award for this. In twenty twenty, I won Community Hustler of the Year. I want to be able to show people how to use, legally use their mind and be able to hustle and do things for the community and be able to change their community. All of the work that we did was sustainable work. Uh, we partnered with our neighborhood organizations. We partnered with uh other local businesses. Um, I told Steeple Town, um, from the jump, uh, if I could help you guys create, I have a vision. Um, I actually, before then, in twenty sixteen, I actually stayed the night at the lady's house who catered Barack Obama's presidential inauguration. She fed eight thousand people from her computer upstairs and their home in San Jose, California. It's in the COVID set. Um, her husband's in the FBI, and I remember talking to him, and I was, he's like, hey, kid, you got everything that you need, but the only thing you gotta do is missing one thing. I'm like, what is it? And I was like, I, I feel like I got it all, you know? He's like, you gotta have a vision. You gotta have a vision for what you want to do. And so uh, now I want to buy the Adelante High School, which is in the Black Hills. Um, I want to turn that into a renewable, uh, sustainable power community center where we offer stipends, not stipends, but potentially stipends. But I want to do service learning. I want to do esports. I want to revitalize the court. I want to have it, uh, LEED certified platinum. I have a certain standard of building and excellence that I want to do, and all of the jobs that we train and careers that we train for will be above the poverty line. Forty-seven percent of the African-Americans in Grand Rapids uh live in poverty. Sixteen percent of our um Hispanic population is unemployed. And so regardless of the ethnicity, I just want to make sure that I put these in, uh, these centers and my vision and uh any type of operation that we do in impoverished neighborhoods, but offer the same service to everybody equally and equitably. Um, this is something I've been working on for four years. Uh, I've even made it in Forbes. I'm, I've been dreaming about uh becoming a billionaire. I believe I can do it, because if you actually didn't know asteroid mining, look up asteroid mining. That's where humanity's first trillionaire will come from. The first person that I actually walk on the planet and have a trillion dollars is from asteroid mining, if you didn't know that. So uh, my business mind and where my imagination uh is definitely far, far out there. But um, I have a vision. I believe I can help the county. I have a global vision. I've met with other countries. I've met with Dubai's government. I've met with Africa's government. I've met with Spain's government. I've been invited to a lot of global conventions. And so I have a, a vision to change the infrastructure and really do it in an equitably uh sustainable way that can actually be able to create real diverse, inclusive, and actually help our poverty line, because it's the second worst city for economic development for African-Americans. I'm very passionate about this project. I've put a lot of time into it. I have a financial team that's helping me put together my pitch deck, my investment plan, my growth plan. I'm ready to uh show my leadership, because I'm a natural born leader. They say leaders aren't born, but I am a born leader. And so I look to uh create this project. I'm willing to work with anybody in the county, um, unbiasedly, and just want to do what's best for all people. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see not, so we will close public comment and move to item ten, and I will ask our Administrator to give the report.
Yeah, just a couple items. Uh, I just have a couple quick items. Uh, Jeff uh sent me a note and said we did get the balance of our ARPA money this morning. Uh, so we do have the full amount uh on hand now. Also, just wanted to mention that uh we did have three ARPA pub, meeting sessions. Uh, one uh up north in Rockford, one down south in Gaines, and one at the Health Department over the past two weeks. Uh, while we didn't have huge attendance, I would say we had uh between fourteen and seventeen at each location, and then some online the first two sessions. Uh, but we had very thoughtful and very good public comment and good conversations that I think in each case went the full length of the hour and a half. So uh, and we're also getting a very strong response uh to KentCountyARPA uh dot uh dot com. And so we're getting a lot of feedback there as well. So I think the public of, the reaching, uh, the public on ARPA is going very well. And that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. We will move to our next item, number eleven, which is reports. Any additional reports from any commissioners? Commissioner Jones.
I just have one, and going back to the written form, again, it would be nice if we can find a way to add pictures to that. So if the, if that's something that we can work on, it would make this a lot easier. But I do have some pictures that I want to forward uh from Grand Valley Metro Council. They met this week and they had uh their vehicle in the building, which is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's already, the investment from Grand Valley Metro Council's already paid for itself with contracts for entities to use it. But it, it is a highly sophisticated truck that allows to do all the Pacer ratings and more with technology from scanning to pictures to real-time moments. So it's a great asset for the community, and just thought I would mention that, and the pictures I'll have sent separately. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports? I see none. All right, we'll move then on to miscellaneous. Is there any miscellaneous from commissioners? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So mine's uh not information, but request for some information. I know we passed uh resolution on the weatherization, and I guess if you live in Michigan, when you hear that word, you think about winter. Um, I guess my uh request is, can we get more information on who, who actually runs this program? I see the Department of Energy has the subsets, which are the human services and health. Uh, because weatherization just isn't a seasonal winter thing. Uh, a lot of deaths occur in the summer due to heat and humidity, and if we're weatherizing just homes for winter concerns, uh, we might be missing the boat. So just any, all information on more about this. I don't sit on the Finance Committee, so I didn't have time to ask question or listen to the presentation, so thank you.
All right. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to mention um a lady that passed away a couple days ago. Um, about eight years ago, um, I helped start a, a, a community event called the Freedom Cruise, and we, from that, we established Finish the Mission Veteran Relief Fund. And what we do every year is we find a West Michigan soldier that was killed in battle, and we honor that family. And uh, about year four, every year we have to find a recipient for the portrait that we do. And around year four, we were sitting around a table, who are we gonna get, you know, who are we gonna honor next year? And one of the Gold Star dads says, how about Sandy Valmer? And I said, well, who is she? And he said, well, she's at every single event that you do. She sits by herself, and her son was killed in Iraq in two thousand and six. And what I came to find out about Sandy is not only did she come to these events every year, when her son was deployed to Iraq, he said, Mom, just in case I don't make it back, will you make sure that you continue to honor my brothers in arms, my brothers in service? And he looked at her, you know, and he, Chad didn't really have a serious bone in his body. He was kind of a kid that, you know, he kidded around with his mom a lot, and he was dead serious about that. He says, please. And so that was tattooed to her brain, and when he was killed in combat, ever since then, Sandy attended every single veteran's funeral around West Michigan. She stood in flaglines. She greeted veterans coming back um to the airport, and she was always by herself. And she did this silently. Once I found out about her, she kind of embodied everything good about our Gold Star families. She became that person that I, I, I connected with the most, and I just loved her to death. Um, she honored her son like no other mother could possibly do. When I got the news, I was, you know, I was heartbroken in a sense, because I was with her on Memorial Day, and she looked good, and we had our usual banter back and forth. But I, I, I do know for a fact that all that pain that she suffered here on earth is now gone forever, and she's reunited with her son in heaven, which puts a smile on my face, because she lived a really, really sad life ever since he, he was killed, because her husband actually committed suicide. He couldn't handle the fact that they lost her son. So she had that happen to her, you know, within a month. So I just wanted to mention her, because she embodies everything that's really great about our servicemen and their moms, because I, I tend to, I wanna remember the moms and dads around Memorial Day, because their, their suffering never ends. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioners Skaggs. I'll pass, and we can end on that. I'll go next, uh. Any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you for that. Um, Commissioner Antor, I, I do want to make sure that we visit the Asian Festival. It's happening downtown this weekend, so Kent County will be presenting a proclamation there, so that it's very important that we support our Asian neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for being our ambassador to that. Any others? All right. If not, I do have two items. Oh, sorry. Mister Woodin?
Thank you, Chair. Just real briefly, I wanted to, um, at least, uh, express my congratulations and gratitude to my mother, Wendy Woodin. Uh, as many of you know, uh, my mother was diagnosed with an early stage of breast cancer, uh, late last year. And while it was caught early, she did have to go through a full course of chemotherapy and radiation, and while her, my, my father, her husband, was having to split time between here and Arizona for work. And as of today, probably as of this moment, she is completing her last round of radiation. And I am so proud of the work that, the, of what she did and how well she, she handled her treatment, and, uh, just very proud of everything she did and very excited for her. So, thank you.
Good. Good to hear that. With that, if, yes, Commissioner Bolter.
I'll be really quick.
No, go ahead.
Just wanna thank you guys for, thank the whole board, and really thank Al and the sheriff for all the work they did on the animal shelter. I know it's, uh, issue that doesn't seem super important, but when people are doing horrible things to, to animals or most likely doing horrible things to others, and it's a really important issue, uh, for, for our county. And I know the sheriff is the last person that wants to take on another huge, um, effort, and she is a rock star, and I'm so glad she's our sheriff. And I just really appreciate you willing to take it on, because it truly is for the safety of the kids and, um, vulnerable in our community, and I really, really appreciate it. And Al, I really appreciate all your efforts to take on so many meetings that were probably very challenging, and I just appreciate all you did. So, thank you. Sorry to take the time. Thanks.
All right. Now have we, uh, no more miscellaneous. I have two items I wanted to just talk about. Uh, the first is just to follow up on the ARPA sessions that Al mentioned. I think those were very useful, very helpful. Uh, we did have a number of other meetings with organizations that had requested specific opportunity to talk to us. We followed up with those. Uh, I do have a request from the City of Walker to go ahead and schedule one in the City of Walker, and so I will be doing that. But it reminds me that the rest of you, if you do have interest, if you do have folks within your jurisdiction that are requesting that, uh, we're certainly prepared to do that. If, if you want to do that, just let us know. Uh, we don't have unlimited time. This has to happen relatively quickly for it to fit into the process, so, uh, let us know soon if you're interested in having one of those sessions in your jurisdiction, so. And then the, the la-
Who's the point of contact?
Uh, I would say Al or, no one's raising their hand in the back. Jenny, okay? Yeah, just let us know. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we can. We wanna make sure this information gets out, uh, to the community and folks know that they have the opportunity to participate, so. Uh, so the last thing, uh, I wanna just comment a little bit about, is most of you know, uh, we can anticipate now later today that there will be, uh, an announcement from the prosecutor with respect to the, uh, to the prosecution decision or criminal charges or potential criminal charges, uh, in the Leoya matter. Uh, and I, I don't know what that, uh, decision is. Uh, I suspect none of you know what that decision is, uh, that is retained confidential, I think for very good reasons, probably for the same reasons why Supreme Court decisions are retained confidential until they're released. But at some point here, uh, once that decision is issued, I think it's reasonable to anticipate that there are members of our community who will find that that decision is consistent with their sense of justice, and there will likely be some members of our community that think it is inconsistent with their sense of justice. Uh, that announcement, of course, is not the end of this process. There is much to do in this community, and we will have to go through, uh, many months of process yet following. I mentioned, uh, in the State of the County, uh, address, that we at the county serve in a unique position. Uh, we are not at the state or the federal level where we set policies that dictate and control much of our society. And we are not the local unit of government, where citizens tend to respond with their visceral reactions to what they don't like or what they do like. Uh, we sit in a different place, uh, and in many ways, we have the capacity to be that stabilizing force in our society and in our communities. Uh, this is one of those times when I'm gonna urge all of us to step into that role, uh, as we go forward, and deal with our communities, no matter how they react, to assist them in identifying, understanding, and knowledge about this process, and to be contemplative, reflective, and understanding, uh, about what is happening, and to assist them in being constructive in however they feel they need to respond. We have a way to go. We have a lot to get through. We will get there, but I urge you to be that source of stabilizing in your communities as we go forward. So with that, I will ask, I would have asked Commissioner Womack, but I'm gonna ask, uh, Commissioner Jones for a motion.
I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at eight-thirty a.m. for an official meeting.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.